Okay, we're gonna open the Board of Selectmen meeting for January 8th, 2018 at 6:30. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. I don't think we have any resident comment tonight. So, Selectman O'Neal, can we recap the warrants that were approved on the 25th of December? Do you have those available?
Yes. Recap of the payroll warrant, 18-25, in the amount of $263,419.30. This includes $100,000 additional for the Light Department for their work in the U.S. Virgin Islands. Kudos to those gentlemen. Bill Warrant, 18-25, for $1,443,305.80. That breaks down as follows: The town bills for $104,693.37. Pennsyltown Regional Assessment, $772,323.84. Light bills, $355,963.09. Hello? Google? Water and sewer, $19,982. Payroll withholdings and insurance is at $69,081.61. Debt payments at $90,671.88. And my favorite line, snow and ice removal, $30,589.29. I imagine that's expected to go up considerably.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Onto the warrants. Make a motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-27, in the amount of $156,674.74.
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-27, in the amount of $1,234,363.63.
Second.
Have a second? Any further discussion?
Breakdown, please.
Yeah, the majority is the Pennsyltown assessment for January at $772,000. The town bills were only $65,000. Water and sewer at $20,000. Light department at $71,000. Snow and ice at $40,500.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, moving on to recognition. Presentation of commendations to Detective Steve Patron and Officer Daniel Richmond for bravery and heroic actions with a vehicle crash into Johnson's Pond on Saturday, December 16th, 2017. Detective Patron, can you stand where'd he go? There he is, over there. And Daniel Richmond, over there, please. Jeff? I know you wanted to say a few words.
Yes, sir, thank you. At first, I wanted to start off with a few thank yous if I could. First of all, Denise, thank you very much for organizing this and for your kind letters as the personal director to the officers. Appreciate all your efforts in being here tonight. It's not often that a chief puts me up and brag like this and I've gone over tonight. Very proud of these officers and the entire department. And I'd like to thank all the officers that are here and Dispatcher Batista's here as well. I'd also like to thank you Chairman Wood for allowing us. I know you have a busy schedule, but thank you. And the rest of the honorable board, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. And I realize Representative Mayor is here, so thank you, sir, for being here as well. If I could just read the letters that I'm gonna give, I'll make it quick. Again, I know you're busy, but I'll kind of explain why we're here.
Sure.
Probably as a surprise, and I'm not gonna ask her to get up, this Cindy Batista, the dispatcher was on duty that day. I understand if I made her get up here, I would need medical. But she has to get back there. This is a letter of commendation to Cindy. It's on December 16th, 2017, at 13:28 hours. You received 911 call for a vehicle that had crashed into Johnson's Pond on 201 Washington Street. In addition, you learned the vehicle's driver was still inside the vehicle. You were then able to obtain the necessary information and dispatch for many emergency resources required to respond to this call. It is your training, experience, and methodical approach while remaining calm and professional that helps make such a desperate call go so well. The outcome of calls such as this are determined by how proficient the dispatcher is. With several agencies involved and multiple radio transmissions, you must be able to multitask and stay focused. Your dispatch skills, along with your desire to help others, is notable. You go above and beyond to make the Groveland Police Department such a great and respected organization. We appreciate knowing you were there for us as our lifeline, supporter, and friend. I submit this letter of commendation as you bring honor to yourself and the entire department. You should be proud of your actions as we are proud of you. So, that was for Cindy as a side note. And for the officers, I wrote them both a letter specific to them, and I'm just gonna be the one to, Officer Detective Patron, because it covers Officer Richmond, it's the same letter. So this is, again, on December 16th, 2017. The outside temperature was just about 30 degrees and the water temperature was near freezing. While assigned to patrol on this day at 13:28 hours, Dispatcher Batista dispatched you to 201 Washington Street for reported motor vehicle that crashed into Johnson's Pond. Upon your arrival with Officer Richmond, you observed the vehicle in the pond approximately 30 feet from the shore having gone through the ice. Next, you observed a female operator sitting in the driver's seat. The vehicle was becoming submerged and the operator was not responding to your directions. Without hesitation and with no concern to your safety or the victims, you both ventured onto the thin ice. You Detective Patron immediately jumped into the frigid water while Officer Richmond maintained support on the ice. Working your way through the extremely cold and icy water, you reached the vehicle and physically pulled the incoherent victim through the driver's side window. Officer Richmond was then able to grab hold of the victim and safely pull her onto the ice. You both then brought the victim to the shore, replaced her in a cruiser to keep her warm while waiting for further first aid. Your quick and heroic actions prevent a possible tragic outcome. You both not only bring great pride to yourselves, but to the entire Groveland Police Department, it is a pronounced honor that I write this letter of commendation and present to you the Groveland Police Department's distinguished service ribbon. And that ribbon is awarded to any active member of the department who performs an individual act of heroism, not a mottin' to that required for the Medal of Valor or individual acts of extreme high levels of service that extend over a period of time. So, not being chief of law, I can say this is the first time I've been able to award such a pen or ribbon. And in my recollection of the past several years, I don't think it's ever happened. So, these two definitely went above and beyond, and I again thank you all for letting us be here. I thank you for your support. Groveland Police is in a very, very good place. Over the last year, the support from the board, the departments, Denise, and the residents, they've put us in a place where we can do efforts like this, and it really represents what we're all about. So, I wanna, I wanna thank you all. I wanna thank the fire department, they were there that day as well. It takes a lot to rescue people, so I have nothing further. If I could at some point stand with them and issue them their time.
Yeah, go ahead, do that now. It's not double stuffed, so use quickly.
Don't go anywhere. We're on time.
Don't move. So, the town has a certificate of commendation for both of you as well. I'll read them, and then we can hand them out to you. Detective Steve Patron also applies to Daniel Richmond. For your actions on December 16th, 2017, when you jumped into the frozen Johnson's Pond to rescue an incoherent woman whose car had crashed into the pond and was becoming submerged, you put your own safety aside to extract the woman and worked with Officer Richmond or Steve Patron to get her out of the, to get her off, to get her out of the water and to the shore. Were it not for your immediate actions and outcome, the outcome would have been far more serious. The Groveland Board of Selectmen commend you for your professionalism, knowledge, heroism, and willingness to assist people in distress. You are a credit to yourself, the Groveland Police Department, and the entire community. Thank you on behalf of the Town of Groveland, presented by the Groveland Board of Selectmen January 8th, 2018. Very well done, thank you. I have to say that, that day, I was actually out walking my dog, as I often do, and I stopped by and saw Officer Richmond, you know, just sitting there, kinda looking for speeders down by Lower School Street. And we're just kinda talking, as I like to do with officers that I see on the road. And the call came in, he listened, I heard the call about a car, and he took off. No hesitation, nothing. He just took off, says, "I gotta go." And I was wondering, I'm like, "What was happening?" That sounded pretty serious. And then come to find out, the actions that both officers have done, which is very proud of my position, and very proud of the whole department as a whole. Groveland is lucky to have such a police department on staff, as well as a fire department that we have in town. And I hope people, the residents of the town, realize that, you know, we are very fortunate for the officers and the firefighters that we do have here. I don't know if anybody else on the board wants to say a few words before we invite Lenny up? Are we good?
Neil, I got a comment. I think they, both ought to be commended, and I'd like to make, make a recommendation to the chief that because of their efforts above and beyond the call of duty, both of these two gentlemen should, should be getting a day off with pay for their efforts, if you got that in your budget. And that's my recommendation.
I have half left on that, Sheriff.
Would you pass?
I have half so far. Detective Patron gets to leave his shift tonight, and he's gonna pay, but...
No, at some point. At some point, I think they should.
But I think that's a great idea. Thank you, Chief.
I'm only gonna ask a question like I always do. How cold was it?
Well, you got the other half a day off for that, right?
Yeah, right.
You guys good?
Yeah, that's why you pay these guys what they want, because these guys are special guys. They do these things without hesitation. They're a special breed of human being that, and we're very fortunate to have this special breed here, and I think one of them is a new hire, isn't it? Relatively new? No? Well, keep hiring guys like these and all the rest of your staff, 'cause it's a tremendous honor to you and to the folks in this room.
Lenny? Do you know if Bruce is on his way, or?
I did not hear.
Okay.
But thank you, Michael. Thank you for having me be part of this. It's an honor to be here. You know, it's not often that the Town of Groveland gets mentioned in a Washington Globe headline. And when the story's about a car plunging into an icy pond, it certainly gets our attention. Unfortunately, this particular event had a happy ending, but only because of the quick action and bravery of some of Groveland's finest. Every time I address police officers, I always wanna mention that we should never take for granted the fact that we can happily live in safe and secure communities. That doesn't happen on its own, doesn't happen by accident, happens because of hard-working, dedicated professionals who are very good at what they do. Because of these professionals, we're here to celebrate a happy event rather than mourning a tragic one. So, thank you Stephen and Daniel for that. Now, I have with me a citation from the House of Representatives, if I can read from it briefly, Michael. And it's always nice to be able to hand out a citation to a police officer instead of the other way around. And I'd like to read it. It says, "Being hereby known to all, that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Daniel and Stephen in recognition of your heroic actions in saving the life of a car crash victim. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And it's signed by Robert B. Leo, Speaker of the House, and myself, Leonard Meyer, your state representative. Thank you Stephen and Daniel."
Keep up the good work.
Give you guys a few minutes to read.
Yep. Keep up the good work.
All right, next up, we have appointment. We have appointment of Jake Greeney of Two Mill Street Extension, Groveland, to fill the water and sewer commissioner vacancy effective January 8th, 2018. Appointment is made until the next annual election, May 7th, 2018. At that time, there will be an election to fill the remainder of the vacant term. There you go. Can you come up to the podium, please? Does anybody have any questions for Jake?
He seems to come, seemed to come well-qualified, and...
No, I read that, I read his packet, and it seems like he's got the qualifications, or at least on your way to get the qualifications, so be a good learning experience hopefully over there for you, and learn a few things.
Any questions?
Yeah, this has always been your interest? Are you going to school?
Yeah, I've always been interested in the sciences, especially water. So, I feel like I have a pretty good background, and I'm excited to get a chance to work with these guys and keep up the standard of work.
You're as good at this as you were at baseball, I hope.
I would say.
Good, all right.
Just thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, I'll echo that. Thank you for stepping up. We need more people volunteering and trying to get involved. Anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Jake Greeney of Two Mill Street Extension to, of Groveland to fill the water and sewer commission vacancy effective January 8th, 2018. Such appointment is made until the next annual election on May 7th, 2018. And at that time, election will be filled with the remainder of the vacant term.
Will you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All of them in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you for coming in.
Next up, we have discussion and possible vote, presentation by Bill Daley and Sewell Street Reclamation Project.
Bill Daley, Seven Henmark Lane, Groveland, Mass. Just following up after one of the meetings we had, this will be the fourth meeting to date. Met with a couple members back in November. Sent in a submittal project for the land in the back Sewell Street to get that to a development stage. And here to answer any questions. We got in the submittal that was sent in to all the board members, and also have Phil Peterson, who's the LSP, who put the soil management plan together. I have the civil engineer record, and also the environmental engineer, who's also working on the project, to answer any questions you guys may have. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. It's been, not problematic, but it has, it's had, it has its issues over the past decade, couple decades or so, and we wanna get that rectified, and we've been working with a lot of different agencies within the state to make sure we get this right. And hopefully, a lot of your questions were answered in the soil management plan, but like I said, we had to answer any more.
Okay, so Bill and I met, was it November?
November 28th. Is this my, is this okay?
Is that working? And he presented this document along with his partners to me. I did read through it, I highlighted several questions that I had that Bill and his partners had answered and addressed. I don't know if everyone got a chance to read through it, to have any questions that they wanna bring up. I can certainly bring up my questions again, but I'm hoping that everyone has a chance to kinda read through it, and at least get a general idea of what they plan to do with it, and what the process would look like, and then ask questions so that everyone feels comfortable with what the plan is.
I think if I have Phil, Phil Peterson from Town Environmental speak on, on what he did and how these things go exist, all his firm does, that may answer a lot of questions for us.
Okay.
And then it'll only take a couple minutes.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll follow the data, so I'll turn it over to Phil in a second.
Hi, thank you. My name's Phil Peterson with Town Environmental, and I'm a licensed site professional. I was hired by Mr. Daley to develop a soil management plan to reclaim his gravel pit with the idea to restore elevations and place vegetation and use the property back into use. So, how are we gonna do, how do we do this? The DEP has provided policies to reclaim gravel pits. The other one, the process, I guess you should outline, it provides a process for someone like Bill to get a permit from the state to reclaim the property. And in the plan, it lays out how and the type of sterile soil that we will accept, and what types of soils are acceptable. The types that he can take are what they call similar soils. So, it'd be basically less than RCS1 soils with similar levels that are present at his site now. And this process allows him to fill in the pit and close it out, and protects him, as well as the town and anybody who wants to bring in soil to the site. I don't know how, Phil, do you guys have any questions? I guess it's kind of a summary.
Right, I mean, like I said, I met with Bill, I read through this, I asked him questions directly, so I'll open it up to the board. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Lisa?
So, I don't have any questions per se, per se, because I feel like this is out of my area of expertise. So, what I would probably want is some feedback from the Conservation Commission as to, you know, protocols and procedures, 'cause I, this is like a foreign language to me in terms of what it means, so.
Bill, say it.
I echo the sentiments of my colleague to my right. This is well beyond my bailiwick.
Ed?
Yeah, just a couple. On page five, Soil Acceptance Criteria 3.0, under the visual, which is on page five, about a little more than halfway down. Visual inspection of soil is to be performed at the time of soil borings, test pits, stockpile sampling at the time of excavation in or upon arrival at the project site prior to acceptance and placement. R&amp;D Site Developments LLC will have an authorized representative on the site on a full-time basis to observe offloading of trucks and perform visual inspections of the soil. Don't you think it should be a, an independent person to be doing that, rather than the company that's accepting the material? They're not liable to reject any material.
Right. So, I'll just, so the process is, you kinda talked about, all the soil that will come into the site will be sampled by a licensed site professional, which is somebody, me, who is licensed by the state under hazardous waste regulations to oversee the project. So, anything that comes into the site will be tested as laid out in the plan, and also field screened. When the material goes onto the site, that's why I think that Bill was hired, me, woman LSP, who have a license with the state, will be overseeing when the material comes in. So, this, this plan, the process, and bringing a licensed site professional into the whole program gives a sense of security that everything that does come in is overseen by an environmental professional. So, myself, anybody on the other side of where the material's coming from has an obligation to meet certain requirements and look out in the best interest of, of the state regulations, Bill, and the town.
Thank you. Another question. On page six, on the bottom, Source Site History and Use Criteria. Says disposal and/or release of oil or hazardous materials must be provided in submittal packages prior to acceptance at Sewell Street. Oh, I thought we were supposed to be accepting oil or hazardous materials. There'll be, it says prior to acceptance at the street.
Well, so what I'll ask for, and what the plan lays out, is that I wanna know the entire site history of a property. So, if there's a property in Newburyport, and I want, and it has a pile of soil that's been tested, I just don't wanna know, I wanna know what the chemical characteristics of that soil is. I also wanna know the site history. So, I wanna know if it was, if it was a dry cleaner, if it was some sort of tanner, and that'll give myself an idea of what's on the site. So, before any material gets accepted, on the other end, say, this project, say, in Newburyport, there'll be an LSP on the other side who will do kinda what I would do. They collect the samples, they have the site history, they provide all that information to me. So, I'd get a packet of soil, you know, packet of information, you know, probably a couple inches thick, going over site history, chemical quality, just to give me a full picture. So, we're not just looking at, you know, the data, we're not just looking at a soil sample.
So, based upon that statement, you, you could be accepting release of oil or hazardous materials. As it said, it must be provided in a submittal package prior to acceptance at the Sewell Street, at Sewell Street. So, it could, you could have oil and hazardous materials.
No, we would not accept it. I wanted, so if you have a large parcel of property, there may be on one side, you know, no, nothing was going on, and on the other side, it could be a whole site that they had some chemical process going on that contaminated the property. So, I wanna know that before we accept it.
And...
We would not accept that type of material.
All right, now, now, I'm sorry, I don't know the terminology. I tried to look it up, but I couldn't find anything on it.
Okay.
On page six, about two-thirds of the way down, soil mixed with bentonite or other slurry material. Could you explain both of those terms?
So, bentonite is a clay material that they use when they put in foundations. I'm not a geotechnical engineer, so I'll give you, so as they're digging big solid holes, before they dig a big hole like you would for a house, they actually dig the foundations. So, down deep in what they, as they bring out the soil to keep the sides from collapsing, they put in a soil bentonite mix that basically holds back the size of the excavation. So, as it taken off that soil, that was already been tested, and in this case, considered clean soil, it may have this bentonite clay, natural clay material on it. So, they do let it drain on site, but there is some stuff to it. So, that's what that refers to.
Just one or two more.
Oh, yeah, that's all you want, yeah.
It, on page four, 3.0, Soil Acceptance Criteria, Groundwater Classification. The site is not, not located within a current drinking water source, water source area, but it is, it is on an aquifer, and that... But it is, it is on an aquifer and that whole section is an aquifer. And I know we've had problems before with, we try to protect the aquifer. That's why the town bought some land to protect the aquifer, but this doesn't seem to be, it seems to be going in the opposite direction.
Well, from my understanding, this property is outside of a protected entity of zone one or zone two aquifers?
Or in zone three.
Or in zone three, for the most part. And then I think if we read the plan, we do propose, as an extra layer precaution, that we are going to put in wells and monitor groundwater.
But anything that is dumped in that area, it flows, it flows down that little brook and down through to beside Chesterton property. So it's not flowing the opposite way, so it's heading right for our town wells.
Again, I mean, this, as far as, you know, surface water will be controlled through engineering controls. Any of the soil that's coming in, what they, what they call less than RCS one, which is suitable for residential use. So it is protective of groundwater, drinking water, in groundwater as well as surface water. But we don't anticipate any runoff or flow coming from the site.
Ed, I think being civil engineer can touch base on that a little bit more.
And how many cubic yards are you planning on accepting at the site? You probably wouldn't know.
Well, I think we've talked about some different numbers, but.
The DEP likes to see a hundred thousand for the policy. I would do it.
Yeah, so the reclamation policy that we're going to get is permit. The threshold is greater than a hundred thousand cubic yards.
The threshold is greater than a hundred with DEP, but with the history of the site and everything going on and for my protection as well as the town's, even if it was under a hundred thousand yards, I would still apply for the administrative consent order permit from Mass DEP, just because it would benefit protection for myself, knowing where all the soils come from and having it tested as opposed to not. Because you want to make backup pertaining to any issues down the road or, and you leave yourself, you're liable for a release. But as far as the aquifer, just to touch on that. The aquifer, zone two is in the beginning of the property, but the filling will be in zone three. And nothing's draining into the brook. Nothing will, I mean, that's incorrect. I mean, nothing will drain into the brook at all. And Eric, who has somewhat of a site design, we have all the water contained on site. We're not discharging it to the town of Groveland at all, so.
What's the amount of the performance bond that will be on the property so that, for the town's protection?
Hasn't been discussed an amount yet, but it was been talked about. I don't, I don't know. It's negotiable. We'll open it to, to any of them.
Okay. I don't have, at this time, I don't have any more questions.
Who sets up that performance bond?
I have it from my insurance company. It depends on, it depends what the town would want. I mean, if you want payment and performance, I mean, it wouldn't be a payment, it'd be a performance type action more than a payment. It's not like you can, so.
But is that designated by the board of selectmen? Or is there another entity or town board that is responsible for requesting that?
You know, here's the thing, there's really no vehicle in place in town to approve or deny a fill project like this. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to outstep, outstep something, but there's not a process or protocol to follow, so it's kind of a. So there were agreements in the past between previous owners and previous boards on filling the place. You know, back in 2000, it started and then it got stopped. It was picked up again, I think in 2012, never got up and running. So for each time there, there was a different, a different agreement in place, so.
But it sounds like you're not opposed to a performance bond.
No, I'm not opposed to it, no, absolutely not. I mean, we've done a lot of work, we've done a lot more work than all the previous owners. You know, the site, I don't know if you guys have seen the site, but it's a danger, it's a danger right now. It's a dangerous site and, you know, there's, there's actually escrow monies in account to fill that quarry in, that have been there for, you know, over 20 years. So there's, there's been lawsuits filed to fill it in. There's been a lot of stuff in the past over that property, so there's been a lot of state agencies talked to and there's a lot of permitting going on. There's, you know, between natural heritage and, and Mass DEP and the town itself. And then we're doing it right and, you know, we've been doing it for six months so far and, you know, this is where we're at. So you can see in the submittal that a fair amount of work went into it. I know it's a lot of big words and stuff, but, and the other thing is with the soils, it's not, I need to build them here later, so I'm not going to take, you know, the bentonite, you know, the wet slurry stuff. It's just saying that we can, because it is clean. It's not, but this needs to be compatible material. And the beauty of it is, is that we have the right to approve or reject it. You know, we don't have to take what people have, you know, or what they want to bring in. I don't, no, I can go look at it before. It's all, it's all submitted on. You know, you can drive up and look at it, you can say, no, I don't want that stuff. Well, yeah, we can take that, but I only want to take X amount of it. So you have control. Any other way, you don't have the control. But we'll all know and ahead of time of what's coming in. And we can always keep the board in the loop and send the board the copies of the required reports that get sent to DEP.
Yeah, so part of the process, we have to submit monthly reports.
Right.
To DEP online, which you'll have access to, and we could give you a copy before we submit.
Well, that's what I had talked to Bill about, is when you're submitting those reports, instead of waiting for us to ask for them, automatically include us. That way we're seeing, and we, I mean, I don't really, like Lisa said, I don't really know what I'm going to be reading, but we can see the reports, we can kind of figure out if there's anything in there that might raise a red flag. And the other thing we talked about is, I know that there will be cameras and monitoring down there, but we also talked about having them online and available. So if, you know, if anytime someone wants to log on to an IP camera down there and see what's going on, that's more transparency and being open on what's happening. And over-communicating of what you're doing down there. Because there's going to be some people that are going to be concerned, like Ed had mentioned, about how close it is to an aquifer, what you're going to be accepting for material, how you're going to accept or not accept things. And the more you can communicate and the more you can be transparent, the easier it's going to be for people to accept what's going on there and kind of say, all right, you know, Bill's doing the right thing. He knows what he's doing and he's doing it the right way, making sure that everything is clean and kosher over there. Bill?
Okay, so I did have a chance to read through the packet. I spent quite a bit of time, and as everyone has said here tonight, that it's a lot of big words. It's a lot of, a lot to know and a lot of knowledge. One thing that I liked when I opened up this package is I liked it because the DEP is involved. I've dealt with the DEP before. I dealt with them on one of my own properties. And they have every single checking balance you'd ever want to deal with. And as you stated, if the material's coming out of Newburyport, you guys have the right to say, yes, we want it, no, we don't want it ahead of time. DEP is going to be the ultimate say what goes on anyway. They're going to, they're going to keep a close eye on you guys and what have you. That being said, I know Bill, Bill is in town. I don't believe Bill's going to bring in a bad ounce of dirt because he has a family here. So I think that that's kind of protection on the town's part. And the other part that I want to do in going forward this, I want to involve the town in this. I want to involve the town to the point where we go into this as a, as a business, as a business thing for Groveland. So Bill makes an agreement with the town, yeah, I'm going to fill this thing in, I'm going to take care of it, I'm going to do it right. Down the road, I want to see development go out there. I want to see an industrial park or something go out there. Listen, every single school bus that stops in front of one of our houses in Groveland costs us money. It costs us money. Sixty-five percent of our budget at this board goes to the town of Groveland schools, right off the bat. This could be a win-win for all involved. We could really make money. Georgetown, Hamilton, Wenham, Newburyport, those towns have a big business backing. Their taxes are not bad because they have a big business backing. Groveland does not have a big backing of business. We don't have a business base. This could be a win-win, you know what I mean? And I think it would be a good thing if we all can get together and we can do it as a business and we can work as a group, conservation, planning board, everyone. This could be a big win-win, getting the commitment from Bill that he's willing to do something down the road. I mean, he had a conversation with me earlier on and said to me, hey, you know, I'm going to be doing this project over there, whatever. I said, listen, you know something, Georgetown just bought a big pot place over there, okay? They're making money on that. Maybe you could cut the town a dollar a yard. I mean, I'm not speaking for him, but, you know, if the town made a dollar a yard going in there, we could make some money. I mean, it's a very, very good project that could be, if it's done right, for the neighbors, for the town, and everyone involved, we all could benefit from it. So, I mean, that's what I'd like to say on it. And I, I think that, like I said, the big DEP thing is where I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, that's the whole idea, to have them involved where other actors have not done it on their own.
Right.
And it lays out a policy, it's open book to everybody. The DEP has an input, will give us a permit, will say, yes, you can do this, follow these rules.
And to go back to Selectman Watson's point, if the land is not taken care of, and I know exactly what he's saying, that, that water falls in that land, and it does. It does ultimately go downhill because if there's not the right retention ponds built to catch it and purify it and clean it and whatever. I've been involved in the town politics for a long time and I know, I'm sitting in front of a long-time resident here, and he's dealt with this project. He knows more about it than anyone. And you know something? The land was left, it was abandoned, there was money left, et cetera, et cetera. It's an eyesore. It needs to be cleaned up. It needs to be done right. And no one should drop one ounce shovel on it until we all have a good agreement. And I think we could do it, including the neighbors and what have you, so.
Sounds good. Okay. That's it? Bill, for it?
Yep, thanks.
I have a few questions, and again, forgive me because this is sort of new territory for me. But what was the process that generally followed? So clearly you reached out to DEP, you own that property, I'm assuming, and you reached out to DEP. Were other town boards involved in this at all? Or this is just the preliminary process that you go through is just reaching out to DEP to get their approval for this?
So I guess, yeah, we reached out to DEP first. They have a policy in place for these, these types of things to, like I said, to protect everybody. There really isn't anything in town. Some towns will have fill permits. Some town, you know, where, like they have, you have an earth removal permit, but not a, a, a fill permit. So you would follow the guidelines for that. So we met a couple times with the development review team, maybe, you know, a few heads of local boards. Twice there, then the third meeting with Mike and Denise and, yeah, so it's kind of hard because you don't have all the permitting in place. So, but DEP is ultimately the tool that would need to be filled on. If you don't utilize the DEP, then like I said, you, you could be responsible for a release. You know, like, Valley screw is a perfect example, right? That's some of the most beautiful gravel in the state, up in that area. But it's some of the dirtiest, but you wouldn't know by looking at it. That's why it needs to be tested. You just don't know by looking at it, what's in it. So you can't tell PCBs, you can't, so that's why the testing. And the testing's on both ends. We have no control over the other end that's submitted and, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
And DEP does pop in. They do their monthly unannounced inspections.
Okay, and then my other question is, so this is part of an ongoing process. Your intent down the road is to put business or residential there?
Not residential.
Not residential, so your intent at some point is to use that for a business purpose?
It's owned industrial. There's a lot of uses by right. I don't want to sit there and say, I want to put in forty-seven, you know, industrial base right now because it's kind of a two-part project. It's a decent amount of cleanup and earthwork to do to get to a development stage. I mean, we could talk about soil extensions, water main loops. I mean, there's a lot of stuff and that's, we'd just be putting the cart before the horse. But I have no problem. I grew up a game plan.
Yeah, no, just to understand that.
Yeah, it's not going to be left.
Mr. Dunn's point, you know, I, again, I wasn't really aware too much of what the, it's helpful to know that the intent is at some point to put business there as opposed to residential.
Yeah, well, it won't be left barren, it won't be left in eyesore, it won't be left to vegetate. I mean, it's, no, my plan is to, is to absolutely develop it. I mean, we even have, you know, a wall, you know, to make it more aesthetic.
Okay.
Which, you know, if you were just going to leave it, you wouldn't, you wouldn't do a wall.
Yeah.
But, you know, the plan is to absolutely develop it. But there's a lot of, a lot of agencies involved and a lot of, you know, it's a lot of agreements to make, you know, to make it all click and it's, they all have to fall in order, so, and that's where we're at.
So my final sort of question class slash comment is, so for me, I would feel better if there were a performance bond. I just think that's an added layer that protects the town. I don't think there's, because there isn't necessarily a lot of protocol in place, I think it's an added benefit that would protect the town. So I don't know what the process is, whether you want to submit some type of proposal around what you think is a reasonable performance bond or whether we get the input of other entities around, you know, what an appropriate amount is. But I would be interested in pursuing that piece.
Yeah, if you guys want to talk, I mean, we could do a fifty percent performance bond maybe. That's figure out, you guys can figure out what it costs because, you know, most towns do a fifty percent performance on a utility job or something. You know, if it was for your own stuff, obviously if it was, if the town was paying to have it done somewhere else, obviously it's a hundred percent payment performance. But, yeah, I mean, bonds are on a roll.
Okay.
So you just have to agree on it. I mean, you know, as long as it's not an outrage, I mean.
Yeah, and again, that's not my area of expertise.
Yeah, it has to pass muster.
And I want to know what's reasonable and I wouldn't know where to begin.
My bonding company might be able to help. I could reach out to them.
That'd be a good start.
Yeah, I don't, because they're not going to bond something that's not, that doesn't make sense. You know, they're not going to bond ten million or something for a one million dollar.
Right.
Project, you know, so.
Bill?
Hey, Bill, what's the, what's the overall timeframe of the project? What do you see this going? Two years, five years, 10 years?
I could have the place filled in a year and a half, I think. You know, I feel strongly about that. You know, maybe quicker, maybe a little longer depending on the market, but, you know, reasonable, 18 months. You know, it's not out of the question.
In 18 months and then 24 ready for development or 18 ready for development?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Eighteen months ready for development or?
Eighteen months ready, ready to, you know, we'll be working on the plan as we get closer to that. Let's say it's 18 months, yeah, during, after the first five or six, we'll see how things are going and Eric will start with civil design. We have all the grading and stuff, though we just don't have buildings, structures or uses yet. We'll just follow the market conditions at that point. Like I said, it's industrial, it's open to just about any use. Dozens are still permitted already, so. Yeah, and then depending on what goes in.
Just follow whatever the process is.
It could be, you know, it could be one industrial building at a time for five years or so. I don't know. There's still a ways to go, like I said, with permits, it's natural heritage. That we're, you know, close to reaching agreement with them, we've been dealing with them for the past six months. We have a final meeting, I think, later this week, so. That's where we're at. But it should go quick. I mean, I don't, this is what I kind of do and I don't, you know, I get stuff done.
What's your biggest hurdle, you think, in getting?
Biggest hurdle? Just getting everything to fall in place, you know, in order. It's tough, it's tough. Like this has been, no one, just the fill, no one, there's no permit from the town, but yet, how do I get, how do I get approval? It's not like you guys can just say, yeah, we'll write up a permit because it doesn't exist. So that's, that's one hurdle right there. Natural heritage, you know, that's, you know, not a hurdle, it's more dealings. It's, you know, you get, you learn a lot about, about the mapping and what needs to be done and it's, it's everyone just working together at the end of the day, I feel, but.
Now, I know you've got a ton of experience working in a number of different municipalities and towns and cities across the state and probably multi-state. Who typically would you get that permit from? Would it be planning, zoning, the city council, town selection?
Usually there'd be, yeah, engineering departments, give out a lot of permits. Water and soil, obviously, but, or the mayor's office. They may have a community development office or something, but that's why DEP, we go into their guidelines, it kind of removes the town, you know. And, you know, they just want to make sure that your concerns have been answered. You know, that's all, you know, it's all online, so. The hurdle's not, the biggest hurdle now is the smell.
Ain't that the truth?
That's it?
Yeah.
Denise, did you have something?
Yeah, I actually wanted to respond to one of the questions Lisa asked. So when the packet came in, Mike asked me to run it by town council because this was new to all of us. So council reviewed it. We do not have a bylaw. So a lot of communities have a bylaw for. So council reviewed it, we do not have a bylaw, so a lot of communities have a bylaw for this type of project, we do not. So they went through our bylaws, they went through the project proposal, and said that really this board is to meet with Bill, have a discussion, and come up with, you know, perhaps you want to limit the truck travel, the direction of travel, not unlike what you've done with, what we do with the earth removal, but those are some suggestions you could work with him on for the project. DEP would like to get, if there's any feedback this board has, they would like to get that to take into consideration. The only permit that, as far as filling of the land, that town council has found, which we did talk about, was the land, we do have a land disturbance bylaw, and this does reach the amount of land being disturbed, so that is really the only formal permit to fill the land that we've found. Otherwise, this board, there's really no formal vote, you're just going to discuss, and when Mike and I met with Bill, it wasn't even that you all had to make a decision tonight, you could think about it for the next meeting if you had, if you needed time to digest it, to come up with some criteria, if you had any proposals you wanted to give him. So that's just, so you don't think you're being rushed into anything tonight, we did have it planned for a two-meeting to give you guys time to think about it, but that's really the process that town council had outlined for us.
Bill?
Yeah, so, kind of back what Denise just said, and it's kind of where I was thinking, I think it would be good to sit down and digest it, and let Bill digest it, and I would like to meet again, and possibly, like I said, maybe we can make a win-win for everybody. I mean, you know, I'm not trying to back you into a corner either, but, I mean, I know you've got a big-money investment over there, what's that? Big-money investment over there on your land and what have you, but just to try and get some kind of an idea where you'd be thinking down the road, as far as building or whatever you're, try to do a little more thinking on that end of it, where you might be going. And I understand, you're not going to build the thing at the end of 18 months, start throwing wood up, but try and give us a better idea where you're thinking you're going with it, the project.
Yeah, that's no problem. I'll have some answers, maybe, to start discussions on a performance.
And the only other part that I would be, and I think I've heard the gentleman here talk about it, I definitely would like to make sure someone is there, obviously you testing the soil, et cetera, et cetera, and then maybe having someone on behalf of the town, once a month, look at it or whatever, or, I don't think we have anyone who even could do that, I don't know, but maybe you can answer back to the town, and let us know what's going on, and what have you. I definitely think we need to have more input on that periodically, and once a month or whatever, you know.
Yeah, we can talk.
That way they're, it's going to satisfy all the people involved, and what have you.
Yeah, they could maybe review the monthly report, you could do a sidewalk, if you're representative of this.
Yeah, that would be good.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Like the sample, send it to the lab.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily mean that you have to come before this board every month, I mean, it'd be nice if we had the time, but, like I said, being more transparent and more open, and, you know, more providing of information is better than us having to chase and ask for it, is the bottom line for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, definitely, everything's going to be on site anyways, all the paperwork.
And the last piece of what I was going to say is, I know Searl Street, I know Bill's a contractor, but again, the win-win on the behalf of the town, can we make improvements out there, can we make, you know, whatever improvements we need, or whatever, think about that kind of stuff, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think about soil extensions and water loops, it's down the road, and yeah, that road will be wide.
Again, that would be a win-win toward the town, help the town, type thing, what have you.
Maybe, just a question for Bill, could you just touch on the upgrade that you'll need to make to that street for the truck traffic to be going in there? And the dust control?
Dust control, the water truck, there'll be sweepers on site, dust and noise will definitely be controlled, and the street, the street could do some work now, especially up at the end by Salem, you know, and then it'll just be maintained until it's finished, you know.
Are you planning on exit and entrance on the same street?
Yes.
So, aren't you going to have to widen that?
No, no, it's 40 feet right now, that's enough going. And I'm not going to go in all the way where they were going before, we'll go in sooner, and it will open up once it gets cleaned up, it will open up, but it's a 40-foot right away there now, which is more than enough.
That's it?
Yeah, for now.
So I see in your proposal that you have a list of, that you're willing to comply with parts of the, or the agreement that was already in place for aggregate, and that was sort of negotiated, so I think those look good. I think maybe just being a little bit more specific regarding what you're willing to do to maintain noise and dust control, maybe sort of operationalize what that means, like you said, you'll spray water down, or...
Well, like I said, yes, there'll be a water truck, there'll be a sweeper on site.
So maybe just putting that in there, that this will be the mechanism that we ensure that...
Sure.
I am all for improvements that benefit the town, but I don't think ethically we can enter into any agreement where there's a quid pro quo around, you know, a dollar, yeah, we can't do that.
I got you.
I don't believe we can, I mean, I could be wrong, Denise.
No, I would say, you know, road improvements, things like that, that would benefit the project and the town, absolutely, but I would say anything other than that.
Yeah, that'll be, you know, on the civil drawings, and with the planning and all that, as that time comes, but...
And I think that, sort of, the list of things that you've already identified is somewhat comprehensive, as I said, just maybe operationalizing some of that a little bit more.
Yeah, this is very, you know, preliminary stuff right now, too, so it's hard to cover all the bases, and, you know, absolutely open the negotiation and then conversation on every detail, so whatever it takes.
So I think you're on the schedule for the 22nd again?
Yes.
So if you could, before then, get some kind of draft on the performance bond?
Yeah, I'll get a draft on a performance bond, what they think, or what they typically do. I'll clean up a list of, you know, more definitive on the, on noise and dust, and cleanup and stuff like that.
Okay.
Right, if I may, so I think the, as Lisa just pointed out, so the general conditions in the aggregate agreement that was in the packet from Bill is a good guidance for the board, so I would look at that, and that talks about hours of operation and things like that. That's something that you would really go through and negotiate and talk to him about, you know, what his hours are going to be, you sort of solidify those things, the water truck, that should be in the agreement, so that's really what you would do at the outcome of this, is come up with some general conditions that he agrees to follow, that the board's happy with, and that will allow him to get his project completed.
Yeah, I don't think we need to debate housekeeping skills at this point, you know, in time, but that's all, it's going to be done correctly, you know, the bottom line, it'll look good.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Just looking at that original agreement, there's, most of these don't even apply anymore, I don't, I don't see what the, oh, November 2000.
It's page two of the...
Here you got number nine, "A bill of lading will be issued to the driver when loading, and an agent hired by the town of Groveland will check each vehicle bill of lading upon arrival at the site, at a rate of $17 an hour that the town will be paying the individual, according to this." The other one, "The police chief may determine that the presence of a police officer is necessary at the entrance, intersection of Salem and Sewell." You going to do a traffic study prior to the project starting? A traffic impact study?
I don't think there's going to be that much traffic.
We're going to wash the trucks prior to exiting from the property?
It'll be truck wash, a wheel wash.
Where's that water runoff going to go?
It'll be a wheel wash, it'll stay right there, it'll stay right there, it's all gravel on the way out, but like I said, if there's anything tracked out on the road, it'll be addressed, you know, there'll be sweepers on site, water trucks, riprap entrances, construction entrances.
I don't have any more questions, that's had enough.
Bill, you good?
No, I think I'm good till next time.
Do you see it, Bill? Bill?
Good now?
Okay.
So we'll see you on the 22nd, if you could do those couple items.
Hang around to see if there's any questions?
Actually, Mike does have a question, so, yeah.
Yeah, Mike Dempsey for the Conservation Commission, I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that there is an open order of conditions on the property under the commission and DEP regarding mitigating the drainage off of the site. And so this goes back a few years, when the prior owners applied after we had an enforcement order put against it because of materials and runoff from the site, and so they applied for a permit, a notice of intent, to fix that, and so that was about three and a half years ago, we issued the orders of condition on it, and nothing has been done since then. Now, I did hear from Mr. Daly that, you know, he intends to follow the orders of condition, but I'd like to see that, you know, that's made a condition of whatever permit gets issued by this board.
Do you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
A copy of the...
The order of conditions for that site?
Yeah, I can get it to Denise.
Bill, have you seen that?
Yeah, he knows about it.
Yeah, I have seen it, the problem with that order of conditions, it was never recorded.
It doesn't matter that it was never recorded.
It wasn't recorded by the old owner, so I was not aware of it, it wasn't in the closing paperwork, so I didn't know about it till after the fact, because it was never recorded, so the closing attorneys titled searches and all that, couldn't come up with it. So we did find it, I actually, I was the one that extended it last month for another year, myself, I extended it, so I'm fully aware of it at this point.
So is that to 2019, or all of 2018?
It'll go from, I guess, December to December.
Okay.
Seventeen to eighteen.
Okay.
So it'll be all of eighteen, and I did do that, when I became aware, it was very close to the deadline also, and I have all intentions to comply with.
Was there anything in that order that would have impacted your decision to purchase that property, that you think is unreasonable?
No, it's just for the area contained with a sediment basin, everything else is out of the Concom jurisdiction, except for that little area over there, so, we're well beyond a 100-foot buffer.
Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is that, if that order of conditions was part of what we would ask for, you would be okay with that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that's already, I've acknowledged it and then extended it, so, once the season comes into place, we'll, and that's just in the one area that is within the buffer zone.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike? No?
Is this illegal on the conservation, what are you going to talk about? You know what it is, Joe, you know what it is. Right, so that's why...
All right, all right. Are you done, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments from the audience? Everybody up here good? Yeah? Okay, we'll see you on the 22nd then.
22nd.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Bill, any information you have, just send it to me, and I can get it to the board. Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, moving on to votes of the board, we have the minutes from November 13th, 2017. Anyone want to comment or make a motion on those?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 13th, 2017.
You get a second?
May I just comment, so you had asked for a slight change, I just want to make sure that I did it correctly.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
You get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
We have the minutes from November 27th, 2017. Anyone want to make a motion or make comments?
November 27th, I think, it says, I thought you said the 17th.
2017, November 27th, 2017.
Okay. I'll make a motion, motion for passage, they seem to be in order.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Executive session minutes from November 27th, 2017.
So I would like to respectfully request that we table these, because I haven't had a chance to go through them, and I'd like to look at it a little bit more, if that's okay?
Can we table that till the next meeting?
Sure. You should just, I would just say vote on that, vote to table, I would say vote to table.
We vote to table, do you want to make a motion on it?
I can make a motion, vote to table the executive, the approval of the executive session meeting minutes from November 27th.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Okay, so that'll be placed on the 22nd agenda. Vote to approve a 2018 BYOB license for Groveland Diner LLC as part of their common particular license?
So if I may, at the meeting on December 11th, when you voted all the licenses, we had not received any of the renewal paperwork from the Groveland Diner.
Right.
We actually received it on, I think, December 29th, and they did, in fact, choose to renew their BYOB, so when you took your last vote, it was not included, so this vote is just to add the BYOB portion of their license.
And this is renewing it?
They are renewing it, yes.
So they've had BYOB in the past?
Correct. It has not been voted as a separate item when they were originally granted it, the minutes of the meeting at that time stated it would automatically be approved unless there was an issue, so, their license didn't recognize it, the minutes didn't recognize it, so now, going forward, we will have it as a separate item to vote on.
Okay, and then the caveat of that would be that the license has to comply with the current hours of, so if they want to change their hours in order to use that BYOB license, they would need to submit something, correct?
That is correct, so I've actually gone back and forth a few times with the diner, they have requested to change their hours in their paperwork, I told them this board needs a zoning decision, it has to go to zoning to change the hours of operation, they chose to just submit their paperwork with new hours, so this is renewing it with their existing hours of operation.
What are the new hours we're looking for? Let me ask this, what are the existing hours?
So the existing hours are Tuesday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Friday, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday, 7:00 to 1:00. They wanted to change them to allow pretty much all day, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, just in case, there was sort of a just in case we want to have BYOB, or just in case we want to do a special event. So I had said to them, I spoke with the chair of the zoning board, they do predate zoning, I believe the diner itself, but hours of operation still require a zoning change, so before they come to this board to change their license hours, they would need approval from the zoning board, so...
Are they doing that?
I'm sorry?
Are they doing that?
I don't believe so at this point. So, the license will stand with the existing hours that were approved initially.
Okay, so...
I would make a motion that we vote to approve the 2018 BYOB license for the Groveland Diner, as is.
You get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Moving on to old business, previous agenda items that the chair does not reasonably anticipate will be discussed. Start with you, Bill? Neil?
Set for tonight, thank you, Chair.
Okay, Lisa?
So just a quick question, and, correct me, but there was something about a budget request for the fire department, was that supposed to be regarding the repair of the trucks? Is that supposed to be something that we discuss at this meeting?
So I have it just in my finance director time, because it came in Friday after the agenda was closed.
Gotcha.
So I will just bring you up to date on some of that information, just as part of our discussion.
Okay.
Bill?
Yeah, all right, like, three or four things anyway, town planner?
I'm sorry?
How's the town planted, anything going on?
Nope, it's still posted, we have not had any interest since the last round, I will, now that it's a new year, I'll probably post it again soon, back on the Mass Municipal Site, that's where you get the most activity, so, we do pay every time we post it on there, though, so it's already been posted twice, we sent it out to the Massachusetts Planners Association, actually, their chairman is from, I believe, Lawrence or Drake it, and she sent it out for us, we didn't have any inquiries on that. I do know that as part of the planning board's budget request, they are requesting to increase the budget for it, hoping to entice somebody with a higher salary. I don't know if that was to change the hours, I actually asked him if he's looking to add additional hours, or just increase the salary, and I didn't really get a full response on that.
And the other gentleman that we were going to reach out to again, did we ever do that?
Well, the board didn't really have an appetite to reach out to him again.
Okay.
To go along with their request, would that take town meeting approval, because that was approved at town meeting?
It's in the budget request, so it requires this board, the finance board, and town meeting, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the other part was the Houliel answer. I know you can't talk about it, but is it still proceeding?
Um, yes. So I can tell you, I've been going back and forth with town council on it pretty much since the whole thing transpired. I will tell you, so most of, so we will need to convene an executive session in the near future. I will tell you that the last thing we had town council do was sort of review the process that the town would need to take to vacate those foreclosures, identify the owners, refor, go through the textile process, re-foreclose, et cetera. They estimate that to be a two-to-three-year time period. In addition, at the rate that the land court is, they are so backed up. He said there's actually no guarantee they would actually vote to vacate those foreclosures, given the purpose we want to vacate them for. He said we certainly could petition them and ask, but there's not, it's not a necessity to actually vacate those foreclosures. So it may not be as easy a process as they originally anticipated. But they're expecting two to three years with just that. That is, if we find no old owners or if no former owners come forward or have any claim to that property, that would just be going through the process. So we will have to meet to decide how this board wants to proceed with that information. And then we can get back in touch with the Houliels.
Okay. Only a couple, maybe three more, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine.
I think I read something, an email somewhere, that the Hasluck case is going to be appealed again. Is it true that we've already spent roughly $26,000 on that case?
Yes. So what I can tell you on that in a public meeting is, yes. So the Superior Court found in the town's behalf, they have chosen to appeal that decision. They will appeal it to the appellate court, who will hear, not necessarily hear. They will read the judge's decision. They will read a statement from the plaintiff and the defendant as the town, and then they will make a decision on that. To date, we have spent, I think you are correct, $26,000. Actually, I have the exact amount right here. So this was as of, sorry, December 1st, $26,677.04.
And it continues?
And it does continue. So I will say that it should slow down a little bit. Town council will not be, need to be as involved with an appeal, but they are still, I guess, racking up hours.
I think wasting another single dollar on this case is a colossal waste of time and town's money. It is my, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bill. It is my understanding, I don't know if it's true or not, it's my understanding that their attorney is pro bono and they're not paying a thing. So it costs them nothing but time, where the town is spending thousands of dollars and time to fight this ongoing case because they just appeal and appeal and appeal. I'm going to contact KP Law, who is our attorney, and ask if we can countersue based on frivolous continued legal action. Bill?
I think we need to take a vote on that, though.
Well, I think you would need to meet an executive session to discuss. I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, you would just be asking if it's something that's possible.
Yes.
And then you would take it back to the board.
Yes. Because it's crazy.
On the same subject, real quickly, how much more does our council anticipate them spending on this?
So he said it shouldn't be a ton at this point. They plan to use...
It wasn't supposed to be this much either.
They plan to use, so when the last hearing came up, they requested a summary judgment, which meant they provided a statement for the judge to read and asked them to waive the hearing and make a decision based on the facts of the case. They plan to use that same document as the appeal response, just by tweaking it a little bit, just to identify the appeal and respond to their claims. But he said that shouldn't take a ton more hours. They will go to the appeal hearing to hear the judge, but this, there's no testimony, there's no witnesses at this point. So that should be cut down. They don't need to interview witnesses and things like that. So he said it should be a minimum. They obviously still will be tracking the paperwork and stuff, but...
A dollar's too much.
Rough numbers, $2,000, $3,000, $5,000, $10,000, rough, rough.
If I, I mean, if I had to...
Bill, a dollar.
Give me a guesstimate.
Well, generally, what happens at this next stage is that the appellate court is going to review the case.
Correct.
And that piece does not really involve counsel. They're going to review the case and decide whether there's merit in the appeal or not. And then whether there's merit in the appeal or not will determine whether, it could be that they find that there's no merit in the appeal and nothing happens. There's no cost to anybody.
Great, well, we still have to provide that response to the appeal. So they have, they have 60, I believe, 30 days, the plaintiff has 30 days to file their appeal. Then we have, I believe, an additional 30 days to file our response to that appeal.
Written response.
Correct. So that's what they're going to use, the documents mostly that they've already prepared. So that time should be limited. But yes, there wouldn't be any, there's really no other work other than waiting for the appellate court to make their decision. And then depending on how they find would depend on, you know, the next steps. I will tell you, there is still one additional appeal after this, which should be to the Supreme Court. I've been told it's unlikely that the SJC would hear a case like this. But there is still another avenue after this if...
Yeah, my only comment about the standard for this frivolous, I would only state that it's a pretty high standard. And for us to fight, to try to recoup, we are going to spend a lot of money to try and countersue on this basis. So that would be something that we...
Oh, I realize that.
Okay.
I realize that. But to spend another dollar on our council fighting this appeal is utterly absurd.
And so the only other comment that I have about that is that the court didn't find it absurd or else they would have dismissed the summary judgment.
Well, the court found on our behalf.
Right, after the fact.
Right.
But when our legal counsel tried to get the case dismissed via summary judgment, that was denied.
Correct.
But again, we're still wasting time.
I hear you, I'm just...
Yes.
Crazy. Bill?
All right, a couple more quick ones. The Pines Project, do we have any progress, how that's going?
For the...
Work that was being done over there?
Yep, so with the snow, I'm not really sure anything else has gone forward. So I think we talked about before, the drainage has been put in under the utility fields. Conduit for future lighting has been put in. And then they have, I'm not sure if it's all the top soil that's being delivered, but they started dropping off the soil to be spread. The hope was to have it spread before, obviously, more snow came, but you'll see it's over there in pile. So that's pretty much where we stand at this point.
And I would like to go through the chair on this one.
Sure.
I would like to ask the chair, to ask the water department to come before us. I know there's been at least two or three water breaks in the brand-new Route 97 project out there. I don't know who, if it's the state, I don't know if it's the water department, whose responsibility. It was a brand-new road, and now it's been dug up in two or three different places. So I'd like to see if we can get the water department to come in to answer those questions and if it's going to be restored back to that brand-new condition it was in. And I'll let it go at this.
Ed?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do you want me to add that to an upcoming agenda or do you want to think about that?
Yeah, we'll just have to find time for it.
Okay.
Ed?
I'll all sit.
Okay, moving on to selectmen reports. Do we have anything for selectmen reports?
Well, I guess this was to bring people up to date on any committee meetings. So I don't know, it's been a while since we've met, so I don't know if people have any updates.
I don't have anything on selectman report, Lisa?
Actually, I do. With respect to the Elm Square Committee, so I was unable to attend the December 6th meeting. And I reached out to Greg Stark this week, and there was an oversight. They didn't approve their previous meeting, so there's another meeting scheduled for this Thursday, the 11th, at 6:30. And he's going to make it a priority to approve the meeting minutes so that they can be provided to the board. But I also wanted to make sure that the board was aware that at this meeting on Thursday night, several entities have been invited, including Lenny Mira, Senator Tar, the Essex Green Belt, and the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. And right now, it seems that someone from each of those is going to be there. So I just wanted to make sure that in the event that anybody from this board wants to be present, that those...
What time is the meeting?
It's at 6:30.
Are you meeting here?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't remember seeing that request coming.
Um...
He usually emails me, but I'll check the calendar.
Okay.
I don't, Thursday's a quiet, so it should be fine. Tell me again what time?
6:30.
6:30, okay.
Is that it? Bill? O'Neil?
On old business?
Selectmen reports?
No, there really haven't been, been rather quiet.
No, but I will add to that, that on our website, we have some school building committee meetings.
Just one, two more.
Well, that's far, but there is public meetings. I will tell you the dates. One is being held at Bagnell. So school building project, public meetings, they are in the early stages, but they're trying to get the communities more involved. So they are holding two joint public meetings. One on January 16th at the Bagnell Elementary School in the cafeteria at 6:30, and one on February 7th at the Merrimack Town Hall, also at 6:30. So the first meeting, they're going to focus on reviewing the existing conditions of the high school and the middle school and review an initial space summary. The second meeting is to review the preliminary design plan and preferred options for the building project. So again, those are right on the front page of our website, January 16th at Bagnell and February 7th at Merrimack Town Hall. I think that's the only thing that's come out recently from the school project. Yes, we meet every month.
One, yeah, second Tuesday every month.
Bill, done?
Oh.
Anything under selectmen report? Ed?
No, no.
All right, moving on to correspondence. We have the minutes from December 11th, 2017. Holiday card from Anita Wright. And on to finance director.
So a couple of things. So the Community Compact Initiative has come up again. We applied in 2016. We were not allowed to apply in 2017, but now that it is fiscal 2018, we're eligible to apply again. I did select two new best practices for us. One of them, I've spoken with the finance board, the capital improvement committee, and that is getting the Department of Revenue in to help us redevelop our capital improvement plan. The DOR has just wrapped up an overview of our budget process. And at the next meeting, I will have some recommendations that they've made on really the timeline, the process, things that they would recommend. They can do the same with capital improvements. So just in reviewing all of our documents, they feel that our process is too early, that capital improvements are making their decisions too soon without having critical information from the budget. They would help set an attainable budget, funding mechanisms, how the town goes about finding those things, setting those things, having it be more inclusive with the finance board and the Board of Selectmen. I did talk to Jeff Pappas about it. He thinks it's a great idea to really look at the bylaw that's in place and have some recommendations on how we can do things a little bit better. There seems to be some disconnect on what the capital improvement's role is versus what the Board of Selectmen's role is and how it's funded. So just having the state come in and sort of review our process and our bylaw and make some recommendations. This board can choose not to accept them, but I think it's a healthy way for us to get some improvements done on some of those processes. The second best practice is something that we've talked about, human resources. They have a whole division that focuses on developing and updating employee policies. Not a full personnel policy, but such as discrimination, harassment, technology, things like that. So policies that are long outdated here that need to be updated, they will come in, they will review them, they will make recommendations on pretty much the standard across the state and how we should be, you know, retweaking those policies. So that's something that is covered under the Community Compact. It's at no cost to us, other than the time that we spend with them going through the stuff. So those would be great to get some, you know, revised best practices from them on that.
Could I ask a follow-up question to that?
Sure.
Have we received any interest on the personnel board?
We've received two. And I told both of them that until we actually had enough to have a meeting, I wouldn't put their names forward.
Okay.
It is still on the front page of our website, but we had to express some interest in it.
Okay.
The next item I just wanted to bring you up to date on is one of the Class II auto licenses. I'm not sure if you noticed when you were going through them. So Greenwood Auto, we're still waiting on their workers' comp documentation. They provided their license without the workers' comp information, and Cassandra asked them, you know, to provide the documentation, at which point he stated that he had no employees and he didn't need it. But the affidavit that he originally filled out said he had employees. So she sent him a new affidavit and said, "If you are going to sign it under penalties of perjury, that you have no employees, then that's fine. We'll take your affidavit." He has not returned either a new affidavit or the workers' comp policy. So he will be getting a letter tomorrow that until further notice, he is not eligible to sell any vehicles on his property because his license has expired. And I will say technically, the state law would then require him to go through the entire process of petitioning the board for a new license. I don't know if you want to take it to that extreme or give him a little extra time. I will say we have communicated via email, phone call, hand delivery of notices, and we're still waiting on the documentation on that. That is the only license that has not provided all of the documentation.
So you're going to send him a letter tomorrow with a deadline of...
Well, that's kind of what I, right now, it's, until further notice, he is not able to sell any vehicles.
I think we could put him on notice that, and we as a board could figure out a time period that if he doesn't respond within that time period...
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah.
Like by Friday?
Oh, that's fast.
To sign something?
No, to submit those documents. And if he doesn't submit those documents by that date, then he'll have to go through the whole process again.
Right, because then he would have to have a public hearing, have a whole, it's a whole new license at that point. So I don't know...
Either he wants to, he wants to be able to sell cars or he doesn't, right? I mean, a month is too long.
I mean, I will say, we have, the last notice was hand-delivered by the police department the week after Christmas, so probably the 27th of December.
So we know that he got it?
He did get it. They did record that he received it.
I mean, if somebody's willing to hand-deliver it, I'd feel better about it. But if it was going to be sent by mail, I feel like Friday's too soon.
So it's up to you. I mean, I, like I said, I, although it's required a whole new process, I think that's extreme, but...
Or how bad do you want to avoid the whole process again?
Well, we have given, the notices were sent out the end of October, I believe.
Right, so he's had October, November, and hand-delivered the end of December. And now this is the second week of January. So, I mean, I say Friday, the board can vote what they want, but either you want to sell cars or you don't want to sell cars. That's what it comes down to. If you want to sell cars, then you'll get the paperwork back that was due back in October.
So this is only related to his ability to sell cars?
Correct.
Because he does other work there, and he's in compliance with the guidelines related to that work?
Correct. This board only licenses to sell, you know, auto, automobiles. So that's the only license that he is up for this board.
So the auto body shop does not require a license?
Correct. Not from this board. Just the Class II auto sales.
What does the board think? You know what I think.
I think Friday is giving them even more leeway. So Friday's good with me.
Friday's not enough, Friday's too much. Bill?
I don't want to penalize any business owner in the town whatsoever. I want to give them every chance in order to comply. It sounds like we've given them a lot of chances.
I mean, do you want me to do a week, a week from receipt of the letter?
Can we do 10 days? In this way, it's a compromise between your Friday and her end of month.
He wants less than four. Ed, what do you want?
Doesn't matter. Whatever, whatever the majority...
Give him 10 days then.
Well, it should be, it should be no later than January 18th because then you'd have to discuss it at your 22nd meeting, so...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. 10 business days brings us to our next meeting, regularly scheduled meeting.
When did he get the letter from the police?
December 27th, they were hand-delivered. And I will just say, so it was two, it was the diner, Grove and Diner and him. And the diner came in that same afternoon. I mean, they got it and came right down. Well, like I said, it would have to be before January 18th because then we'd have to add something to your agenda for the 22nd.
January 15th.
Well, that's the 10 days, January 18th. Well, that's the 10 days, January 18th.
Oh, January 15th, I think is what...
What's Friday?
15th is a holiday, so we could do the 16th, which would be a week. Whatever you guys want to do.
I'll bend and go to 16th.
You want the 16th?
I'll bend and go to 16th.
So, they'll get one week from receipt of the letter. Okay. So, we will do that. I will do that tomorrow and have that...
I still say Friday.
We'll have that hand-delivered again.
You know me.
So, the Fire Department. So, first, the Fire Department is looking to apply for some grants. They had given me one that they actually wanted to have the board vote to sign, but it's actually not complete. We're missing some documentation. So, in reviewing the grant, though, the town is required to come up with a 10% match of the award, which... So, this specific grant would... It's a regional grant with Georgetown and Merrimack, and our portion would be roughly $280,000, which means...
Is that what the town would have to pay?
No, no, no. That's the grant, which means we would have to pay $28,000 within 30 days of receipt of the grant, so...
Don't use the grant to pay that?
No. So, as I told the chief, you know, we just don't have... We don't have line items for this. We can't spend without an appropriation. So, he's doing some research to find out when the grant would be awarded, if it would be this fiscal year or next fiscal year. And so, my recommendation to that and to another one, if the board supports these, would be putting a tentative article on the warrant appropriating money in the event that the grants are awarded. He believes that this grant, we should hear back from... They're due the second week in February, I think. He's hoping to hear back right before town meeting. The other grant they're looking to write is for a $600,000 approximate grant to replace Engine 2 and 3 with one new engine. I think this follows his model in the past of getting rid of two vehicles, getting one newer vehicle. So, again, that would require the town to find $60,000 if we are awarded that grant. I think that's a much more difficult grant to get, and that wouldn't be until the fall sometimes or, you know, late summer, the fall, when that's... Those decisions come out. So, I told Tim that I can't have the board sign any grants until you decide, well, number one, if you will support funding those 10%, and if you would support putting an article, and there's no guarantee that it will pass. So, I just wanted to know how you want to handle that, where they were in the process of going through this.
What was the first grant for?
SCBAs.
Who was that?
The breathing apparatus.
Breathing apparatus. So, $252,000 would be covered by the grant, and $28,000 would be the town's portion of that.
We just got them.
I think we bought the tanks. I don't know.
We bought the tanks without the masks?
I don't know. I think that... I think we bought tanks.
But do we buy the masks without the tanks?
So, my question, and maybe I'm premature. You were going to get to this, is I... There's something going on with the trucks right now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to get to that part.
Well, I can get to that. We can talk about it all as one item if you want. I just, like I said, I don't want them to waste any more time writing grants if...
We can't vote on it tonight anyway, because it wasn't on the agenda.
Correct, correct.
So, we can't really vote on anything till the 20th?
But we have to decide if we want to put that as a town warrant to put funds aside in case we are awarded this grant.
Correct. So, you would have to either earmark free cash, stabilization, some appropriation to fund these... This 10% of these grants.
So, looking at the books, what is the likelihood that we even have $28,000 that we can move around?
Well, by town meeting, we would. We would have, you know, we'll have free cash certified. You know, the $60,000 is a little more of a wild card, because that's sort of somewhere down the line in the next six months or so.
I mean, I would need a status update as to whether we actually have already purchased those items, because if we have, I would not be in support of that.
Oh, yeah. I mean, why would we want to do that?
Yeah, and then, secondly, again, with regard to the trucks, if we're getting $600,000, I'm in support of spending 60.
Right, that's good math.
Right. The downside is you just need to know ahead of time, because we can't apply until we guarantee that we will fund that 60,000. So, you need to be able to... The chairman has to sign stating that, you know, we accept all the... That you accept all the provisions of the grants.
But the application is due by February, right?
Correct, and in that, you have to sign...
So, they come to my house and collect, is that what happens?
So, you would have to sign with the grant saying that we understand all the requirements of the grant. One of them is, we will have 10% of the cost within 30 days of the closing of the grant.
It's great math, but it's always a little fuzzy when we're talking about these things, because it starts at $600,000, and before we're done, we don't know where we end up. So, it's 10% of what?
Right. Well, I think with the grant, you're requesting a specific amount of money. So, it would be not to exceed that. I think with grants, they can award you a low amount. It's unlikely they will award a higher amount. And that's why I think if you choose to pursue a warrant article, it would have to be worded that, you know, in the event of receiving this grant, it's not just free money that if we don't receive the grant, they get the money. You know, it has to be contingent upon receiving these grants. But then, you're still earmarking money that may have gone to capital improvement equipment or... So, it's kind of a...
Well, the tough part is if the truck situation's really horrible, and I'm waiting to sort of hear that piece, it seems...
Before we get to that, before I let Kathy go, I haven't heard a lot of grants being applied for and awarded where we had to put up 10% to fund it. Is that normal?
Yes and no. I mean, it is, you know, some of the police grants, we have to pay a portion of, but they're much smaller and annual, so they're funded within their budget. So, these grants, the last time the Fire Department applied for a grant like this was 2015, when the truck discussion started. If you'll remember, we were waiting on the verdict of that grant. That was $750,000. And that, I was told that took an unusually longer amount of time, because we had the 2015 winter, so FEMA and... It took them longer to make those awards. It shouldn't take that long. But there was no, you know, because I had said to the chief, "Well, I need to know if it's going to be awarded in this fiscal year, and we need a special town meeting article," or if it's going to be next fiscal year. You know, 30 days doesn't give us much time. He didn't have that information. So, he's supposed to be finding some of that out to figure out how we would then proceed with more of this discussion, I guess.
One second, Bill. Kathy?
Oh, wait.
Backphone. Or you can go up to the podium. It doesn't work. Go to the podium. Use both.
Should have used Duracell.
Kathy Castor, Castor Melis, 12 Hillview, and I'm on the Finance Board, as you know. And I know that you guys review a tremendous amount of information all the time. So, I think it's really easy to get caught up in the next new business. And I just wanted to remind you of that little report that we did. We worked really hard on it, because we felt very strongly that, once the fiscal year had ended, that we should take a look to see, how did we end up? How did we do? And how are things looking moving forward? Because obviously, the operating budget, everybody's interconnected, right? There's only so much money, and what happens here affects there. So, all of our departments, you know, are taking from the same pool of funds. You know, you don't... You know, 2.5% doesn't go very far. So, one area we identified was the snow and ice removal budget. And I can tell you from experience that this was a problem budget when I first got on the Finance Board way back. We're talking 25 years ago. And the problem then was that the budget had never been increased, and so, they were having increasingly larger deficits to have to use free cash to bail out. And it was getting scarier and scarier. So, during that first time I spent on the Finance Board, we started stepping up the snow and ice budget till we got to a point where we felt that, you know, in a year when there's not much snow, it wouldn't be too much money. And when there was a moderate amount of overspending, we'd have not too much to pay off. Well, we identified in our report that after, and I won't say it's because I left the board, but after I got off the Finance Board, the same thing started to happen again. Snow and ice was held constant despite the increasing costs of snow and ice removals. And now, we're back in that same predicament from 25 years ago, where the snow and ice removal budget is not sufficient for snow and ice removal. We all know that.
Was it raised at some point, though?
No.
It's never been raised?
Over 20 years right now.
What's it at now? What's the line item?
$165,000.
$165,000.
Right, and we... I mean, last year's deficit was big. We were lucky that, I believe, there was a school assessment that we got money back on. We got very fortunate. Right now, we have a school assessment that we owe money on. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so, we have a snow and ice budget that we know is not sufficient. We are waiting on the free cash to bail it out. We know this, and we know that in next year's budget, we have to... We have to start stepping that budget up again. We can't afford to leave the town like this, because you're just... You're playing Russian roulette here. Sooner or later, we won't have enough money to bail it out, because other things will go wrong that year. And then, what are you going to do? Our revenue is not going to be happy when we can't pay it off. So, we need to set aside money. So, when we start to say, how much money is going to be available for grants and things? I love grants as much as a next person. And I wish you could just apply for them and see what happens without promising this money. But if it's a grant that makes us commit right now, right at this moment in time, as a member of the Finance Board, on an advisory basis, I don't think we could say, "Sure." We'd be concerned. And I just wanted to remind you about that report. Then, we also identified the legal budget, but we have raised that in the last cycle, but snow and ice not at all raised.
Number one, I'd like to thank you and your board, because I see what you've been doing, and you've been doing one hell of a job. And the statement you just made is 100% true. Really, this board should not spend a penny till we sit down and hear what you guys have to say and what work you've done and all the hard work you've done, and then, we should really start thinking of where we're going to spend the money and work with you guys closely to do that.
But wait, wait. We're just advisory.
I understand, but...
Denise tells us where the money is.
But what I'm saying, I understand that part of it. But I'm saying, we're using your knowledge and your work that you've done in advising us in our decisions. I'm saying, we need to work back and forth.
Right, and I'm not here saying we can't do anything. I'm just saying, this year, we would, you know, proceed with caution until we know a little better how we're going to get through this year, right? Right? How are we going to pay everything we have to pay this year? Because, to my knowledge, we haven't figured that out yet. Okay, thank you.
So, now, I'll move on to the fire trucks.
Before you get there, on that grant...
Yes.
The first one again was $280,000?
Yes.
And wasn't that with another town, so we should only be half of the...
No, no, no. That's our portion of the grant.
That's our portion.
So, it's Georgetown, Merrimack, and Groveland, and our portion... So, because... So, going into grants, it costs money, and there's obviously time involved. So, the chief approached the other communities, and Georgetown agreed to be sort of the host community, because if we are rewarded this grant, I believe, he said, there's only $700,000 a year in FEMA money that can be awarded, then we could not apply for the $600,000 grant if we were the host for both grants. So, Georgetown is hosting this grant. I don't know what their overall total is. Our portion of that is $280,000. And then, in turn, the 10% we have to pay is to Georgetown, because they have to front that money. So, our payment goes to Georgetown for the 10%, because they are responsible to the grants to pay.
Georgetown has enough money, I think.
So, on to the trucks.
Good question. Back to the grants.
Yep.
Easy math. Truck costs $600,000. We'd have to promise to put up $60,000. The state would give us $540,000. At the end of the day, the truck comes in at $700,000. Who picks up the other $100,000?
It would be the town.
Okay.
Does the grant... Does the grants...
Does the grant say that you can't spend more than that, or you could overspend that, and then, you would be on the hook for that?
I'm assuming the grant is... I'm assuming when you apply for it, it's not with a truck purchased. So, we apply, if we choose to buy a $900,000 truck, we apply the $600,000, $540,000, I would assume. That's how most grants work.
And now, the town is on the hook.
Correct, if it's a more expensive vehicle, correct.
And if it takes them two or three years to pick out this new truck like it took us as long to get the ladder truck, town could be on the hook for a considerable amount of money beyond the 10%.
Well, no. I would say, if it took a long time, we wouldn't be paying anything out, other than the... We wouldn't pay anything out at that point. We would have $540,000 and not pay anything out, and I guess the 60 would go towards our purchase of the truck.
Right, but the escalating cost of the truck over the time.
Yes, correct, correct. Okay, on to the trucks. So, I met with the Fire Chief on Friday morning, because he has a repair bill, and our new town accountant refused to pay it, because he has overspent his line item. So, he came to see me to find out what to do, because he has $1,500 in one bill. He has repairs to Squad 1 and Squad 2 that need to be done. Engine 2 needs repair work. And the line item that he uses, which is Fire Department Equipment Testing and Maintenance, also includes his annual maintenance and annual testing that's required. So, he has now fully spent his annual testing, which, as you can all recall, occurs in May or so each year, because he has reminded us of that in the past.
The testing's not done yet?
It is not done yet. So, I have actually told him, going forward, effective fiscal '19, those need to be two separate lines. We cannot be spending the annual maintenance and the annual testing for vehicle maintenance, because he should not have spent that money.
Denise, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is one of those identified trucks the new truck?
No, so Squad 1...
What is the status of the new truck? Somebody told me that's not even in service.
I haven't heard... He's been communicating with Mike on that, to be honest.
The emergency brakes or something were out of the new truck.
But that has never truly gone into service since we purchased it?
It's been in and out.
I wouldn't say it's been constant.
Okay, so, I guess I would like to request that we get information about how much that truck has actually been in service.
Sure.
Look at the percentage of times since we've bought it and issued it. And I guess it's a little...
But yes, so Squad 1 and 2 are, I believe, the two EMS vehicles, one at center and one at south. And then, Engine 2 is at south, I believe. So, the plan with the grant to replace Engines 2 and 3 are the two south engines with one smaller, faster, whatever his plan was, smaller, faster, more efficient. Leaner, meaner. So, Squad 1, 2, and Engine 2 all have issues that need to be repaired. I don't know if the issues are to the extent that they're not being used. I actually don't believe Squad 1 is really in service. I think that one's out, because I think they've been taking the Engine 2 medical calls.
I thought you said both of the EMS vehicles were out of service, I think.
So, if that's the case, then we would be taking Engines 2, the EMS calls.
Right.
I can tell you that Squad 1 is on the capital plan. I don't believe... Actually, they're meeting tomorrow night to finalize their plan. So, I'm not sure what position capital has taken on that yet, but that was the vehicle that he wanted last year that the board didn't support, because we had no funding for it. So, currently, he has no funds left in that line item. He has... So, we are obviously 50% through our budget. He has only spent approximately 30% of his training and education line. So, I asked if there would be funds available, to which he told me that he already has that all planned out for continuing education and training for the staff. And there's money left in his supply line right now, and he said, "That's already all planned out for educational materials for the Bagnell School and for fire prevention and things like that." So, he had told me there will not be any additional money in his budget to cover his overspending. So, I don't feel that... So, he is looking for approximately, or thinks he'll be over at least $20,000 in that line, to which I've told him, "We only have $20,000 in the reserve fund. We can't go to the reserve fund in January and tap that whole fund out, because that's not an unforeseen expense." In the past, this board has been okay with us overspending some line items if we have the money in the department elsewhere that we know we'll be able to transfer to a special town meeting. To be honest, I don't know where we will get this from at a special town meeting. Now, we are required to do our annual maintenance or our annual testing. So, that is something we are going to have to fund. I don't know to which the extent that vehicles are, if they're operable, how great the repairs are.
How much is left in that training line item?
To be honest, I thought I had the report. I don't even have it with me. So, he spent... I mean, there's a significant amount in the training line, because he's only spent about, like I said, 30% of that budget so far.
If the trucks don't work, what's the training for?
Well, I think last year, I had asked him to cut back on the Tuesday night trainings when we were, you know, coming towards the end of the year. You know, perhaps that's a solution, if you work with the chief and talk about, you know, maybe some other cost-saving measures, maybe materials for the Bagnell School are not a necessity if we need to fix a vehicle. That I don't know.
So, my question as well, and I'm sure this is probably not a very popular question, is what ability do we have if we think that he should use that training budget towards these expenses? Does he have the autonomy that he can say no as a result of his position? Or can the board give a directive that we believe that those training money should be spent for some of these repairs?
So, I would say, he has the autonomy for training. However, this board, as part of the strong chief, oversees the equipment. So, if the priority is fixing the equipment and making it a requirement that he finds it in his budget, I guess it would be then up to him where he's going to find that. it in his budget, I guess it would be then up to him where he's going to find that from. And if he so chooses to use the training line, I guess that would be up to him. But you all oversee the equipment still.
Okay. A couple things. Number one, am I correct? Last budget season, we had to override $5,500 for truck repairs?
Yes.
Okay. That's number one. Number two is before we even get into a conversation about $20,000 or whatever, I would like to ask the chair to find out exactly what is wrong with Squad One, Squad Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and get an exact breakdown in cost of what they are to fix.
So I did send you all, and a lot of it I don't really know. I don't know if I printed it. The truck repair logs.
Yeah, I remember. No, but I mean, it's only... And I'm only getting this rumored. I got rumored that truck Squad One is out and they're using a $400,000 engine to go to EMS calls. And I heard, and only again was rumored, that this vehicle has possibly rusted brake lines and they're not using it for that reason. Why don't we just get something? When this stuff comes across our table, they should be educating us and saying, okay, we have a broken brake line, it's completely gone, we can't use the truck. Or, you know what I mean? We shouldn't be getting rumors. We should be getting hardcore evidence put before us. And I would like to have the chair find that information out, what is actually wrong with these vehicles. I don't want to see a repair bill. I want to hear, get something in writing saying what the problems are. Because, I mean, we just, last budget season, got everything with $5,500 up to snuff, tested and improved and ready to go. And now we're back here and they're not even tested. So when these things get tested, we could have a huge list in front of us.
Yes. So I will say, and obviously Kathy can speak to this. So the Finance Board has analyzed this specific line for the past few years. This vehicle maintenance line, again, we need to separate the testing out because that should not have been part of this equation. The maintenance itself on the equipment, because we have maybe some older vehicles, they have recognized the need that we do need to increase that budget in the future, that we are not properly funding for the maintenance of some of this equipment. That being said, I guess what's the right number? And how do you know, you know... My feeling was, and I had said to the chief, you know, maybe you should have come to the board in September and said, we're having these issues. How do you want me to handle this? Should I take Engine Three off the road? Like, what do we need to do? He told me that he does send his updates and doesn't hear back from any board members as a response to his updates.
I think we got one November 28th.
Yes.
That's the last one that I have.
Yes. He was going to give me an update since then. So when I met with him on Friday, he said he would update his update to give you a more up-to-date picture of where the equipment and stuff is. I have not received that as of today, but...
And not to interrupt you, but my point is, if you have a vehicle that goes down and is out of service and you're using a $400,000 piece of equipment to do a job, you would think something would come across our table, your table, someone's table, saying, it's out, we need help here, whatever. That's... You know what I mean? We had this stuff all up to snuff. We went through this already last budget season. And we're not even 50% through and we're already dealing with this again. And granted, I hear what you say. If that squad truck is junk and it doesn't work and et cetera, et cetera, you know something? If we have to roll another vehicle, smaller vehicle in that department into the position for the time being, it could be the chief's car. Who knows? Whatever it is, roll it down, put it in the position, and we will discuss getting another vehicle. But you've got to let us know. We're guessing. This is all hearsay and guessing games and et cetera. I think this board should really be brought up to snuff on what's going on.
Right. Well, and I think, so I will say in his defense, the Squad One has been on the capital plan for a few years. It has not been funded. My concern really is if we're having issues with the engines, you know, 90% of our calls now are medical. If that's the only thing that's going to and from medical calls, then that's more wear and tear on our engines.
Right. That's my point.
And not on a smaller vehicle. So I do think that there needs to be...
That's my point.
Right. So I do think that, you know, that needs to be looked at with the board and the fire chief to say, you know, what is the plan? You know, is there another vehicle? Can we fix one of the squad vehicles? And I think that's a conversation that needs to happen. And I think, as I said, I think he needs to come before the board.
A $1,500 repair or a $10,000 repair?
Right. I know one of them, as I said, I think going through it, I want to say he told me in repairs, the $20,000 included the annual testing. So the repairs, he said like $1,500 for this truck, $1,500 for this truck, $2,500 for this vehicle. Again, I think those were just... He was throwing those numbers out as we were trying to go through his budget, but...
And I think we're going to have to get more information because I heard this week that calls are not even being responded to from the central fire department, that calls are primarily being responded to by the south station. So I would... I really think we need more information about what is going on.
As far as increasing the line item for maintenance, how much good money do we throw after bad? There's got to be a point where you stop throwing money into the 1920 Edsel and you go out and buy a new Chevy.
No. And I think that's fine and that's...
That number on Engine Two. Like, are we continuing to spend money on Engine Two and it's a bottomless pit?
Right. But I think you then have to look at, we're talking $600,000 to buy a new engine, or do we put in...
We just bought one, though.
Correct. Correct. We have a new engine. This is the other engine. Right.
They're different.
But I think that is the philosophical question is, do you pay an extra $10,000 a year for maintenance because we're not going to replace a $600,000 truck right now? I think that's what you need to decide. It's not unlike what we did with the highway department. We didn't fund their loader or something last year, but agreed to put more money in their maintenance to carry them a few more years. I think that's a discussion, but I don't know how bad these vehicles are. If we're really spending tens of thousands of dollars a year, is it, you know, do we put a little more money in preventative? Is it preventative that we're not doing? I don't know. But I think that's part of the issue.
Is it lack of use?
It could be.
Sometimes that is just detrimental to a vehicle.
But I think that's the issue is, do you spend the $600,000 to not have these repairs or do you fund the repairs?
So again, going back to our little report, because we had, you know, we were... What we determined with respect to that was that the fire department used to have like one lump sum for this truck main of like $70,000. And then, and that was not necessarily a good thing because that could be used all over the place and certainly was. But it also meant that when you had a significant repair that occurred, they could go get it. In the process of like putting things into line items, you know, and trying to identify, money was moved from that to new endeavors. So there's new endeavors going on that are costing more money. There's increasing training costs, there's increased medical supply costs. These are new endeavors. So the pot was divided up more. So the question would be, is there any money left in the fire department to put back into maintenance? I don't know that. I just know that, you know, it looks, it looked to us and what we looked at, that the amount of money, and we said this right away at the beginning of the fiscal year, there was not going to be enough money in the fire department maintenance budget. I had assumed they had done the inspections in the spring like they were supposed to. I'm hearing tonight they didn't do...
Well, it's not the spring yet.
No, but they did last year.
They did last year, but that's last fiscal year.
So we do have reports that showed these trucks were okay.
Well, so I sent you all those reports.
Well, I haven't looked through everything. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You're going to show good...
That's okay.
You're ahead of me now. You win.
They were done in the spring. We had to appropriate $5,500 more to bring them all up to snuff at the end of the budget season. It was all done.
We did more than that.
Whatever it was. It was taken care of.
We did a $30,000 reserve fund transfer.
It was taken care of. They were all taken care of.
We brought them up.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, as far as we know. And then they would have had their inspections then at that time, which would have said what else they might need. I'm just, I haven't looked through the reports yet, so I don't know.
Right.
Whether these things that we're talking about now were already identified or not, but we need to get ahead of this and not be behind it. So I, you know, again, from our part, what we are trying to recommend to you is looking forward. Snow and ice, we've got to think in our head that we're going to put 20 or 30,000 at least more into snow and ice in the next budget cycle. And then we've got to think about getting more money into the fire maintenance, the truck maintenance line item in the next budget cycle.
Right. And as Kathy...
We can't be doing this every year, chasing things backwards through the year.
Right. And as Kathy alluded to earlier, our infamous Essex Tech is where we're now short because we pay per student and we don't know those numbers until October. So when we got the enrollment for the year, we are now one additional student more than we've budgeted for. So that's about $16,000 that we need to find for this budget season to cover them.
Finance director's time. Are we still on that?
So think about how you want to handle these grants. We will bring it back up on next meeting. And then I can find out, I wrote down some of the questions you want to find out on the fire department and the equipment. So, and I will ask about the SCBAs and how old they are as well. So that is all I have.
Well, that was...
Just a...
Yep.
You've been gone too long.
I don't know if you can do it six months out, but maybe it's almost time to think about freezing that budget and have them get approval for any expenditures from finance and from board of selectmen. I don't know if it's going to be done six months before the end of the fiscal year.
Do you crosswalk the budget? I already asked that question.
Well, in addition, just to expand upon what Kathy had said and I think Bill had said, maybe we should take a look at all the budgets, line items. Maybe the next meeting, we just have a list of what's been expended, how much is left. Six months out, I think it's time to take another look at that.
Health check.
Yeah, I can give you that report.
Yeah.
So there are the few lines that you obviously know are already in a deficit because we've talked about them, which is the technology line because of our ransom attack and then the property and casualty insurance with the VZ Park addition. Those are the two that are absolutely already in a deficit that we have no choice but to spend both of those. And now we have that fire department. I believe that's the only other account that is in a deficit currently.
Well, let's take a look.
Yeah. I'll give you the report next meeting.
Okay. All ready for finance director's time?
Yes.
That was only 40 minutes. Selectmen's time. Ed?
I think I'm all set. Bill?
I'm good. Lisa?
I just had one thing. I believe Friday afternoon, we learned of the resignation of Dr. Mulqueen. He's waiting for verification from the retirement board, but I just want to say that I was devastated. I think he's done a phenomenal job. He's been here six years and I want to thank him for everything that he's done. And I'm hopeful that we can get someone to replace him at some point that equals his level of professionalism and expertise. But I just wanted to commend him for all the work that he's done while he's been here. And he will be sadly missed.
I do expect him to finish out the school year, even though he's waiting for retirement.
Yeah.
So I am hopeful that he'll finish out the school year.
He did say that he was going to finish out the school year, but I think even with that, it's still a huge loss.
Right. Bill?
Yeah, I want to start out with echoing the sentiments of Slickman Carpenter. I was very taken back by that resignation and quite literally, quite upset. I think he's done a fantastic job here. I think he takes a lot of heat that isn't deserved. I wish he could learn how to push back on that a little bit more. I know I've been one of his biggest supporters and I'm very disappointed in him that he chose this time to leave us. He's taken us halfway to the promised land and it seems that it's a bad time to abandon us. And I'm not, I wasn't really thrilled when I saw that letter. So hopefully, it's for health reasons, personal reasons, anything but the heat in the kitchen was getting a little hot. It tends to get hot every now and then. That's what separates the true leaders from the rest of us mere mortals, who are able to take the heat and push it back. So Dr. Mulqueen, I think you've done a fantastic job. I hope you take this as a personal plea to reconsider your decision. I think the district needs you and needs people like you. There's been a tremendous amount of turnaround in the district and I've seen it in my time here and your time here. And I'd like, I wish you would continue that journey with us and take us all the way to the promised land. And then I'd be happy to drive the car to California for you. Next. Recycle. A couple of weeks ago, it looked like they missed recycling certain parts of town and it was all over the place and it was a stinking mess. Do we know why?
Yes. So this is actually an issue statewide, something I just found out. When the weather is as cold as it is, recycling does not compact as easily. So they were filling up their trucks faster than they could empty. So they actually had some issues with recycling. They were able to keep up with the trash collection during the first holiday week, but with the cold weather, their trucks just couldn't compact the recycling and they fell behind.
One more thing we can blame on the cold.
Yes. Last week, as you all know, I put out a call because there were some issues with trash between the holiday delay and the blizzard on Thursday. They were not able to keep that one day behind schedule with all areas of town because they would never be able to catch up. Their union contracts do not allow them to work. They're limited to how many hours a week they can work and they've been exceeding that on Monday through Saturday, so they're not able to add Sundays into their route by their contract. So they unfortunately had to make the decision. And I can tell you, it happens everywhere because before we chose to close the building on Thursday, I check every surrounding community and every other community had a notice on their website about trash collection that unfortunately, the carrier was going to have to skip a day in order to catch up. So for us, it was the Friday route. This week, they resumed their regular collection schedule, Monday through Friday. And on Friday, they will have additional trucks in town to pick up the missed load from the previous week. But that's why the recycling was missed.
Great. Water and sewer. I noticed on 1/13 during one of those, one of the coldest nights of the year, the water main break.